Like to call to order the December 21st, 2021, Ventnor City Board of Commissioners meeting. Do the flag salute, please? Thank you all. Is we have roll call?
Commissioner Kriebel?
Here.
Commissioner Langrea?
Here.
Mayor Holtzman, let the record reflect Mayor Holtzman is absent.
Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the law. So apparently, we either need to have somebody retire or get promoted to get people show up at our meetings. Because normally, we have about two people here. So it's great to see, first of all, our friends in blue here, some of our friends in the fire department as well. And everybody here tonight, so we thank you for attending. Couple of things. So as we're all aware, we have Chief Biagi is retiring after 36 years in the Ventnor City Fire Department. The last few is our, as our chief. Truly a Ventnor icon, the Biagi name is certainly no stranger to anyone who has been in the city for any period of time. From Sandy and her tenure as our city clerk for many years, and also Doug for his many years in the police department. Doug, you and your family have been and will continue to be remembered and appreciated as dedicated civil servants in our community. You will be missed, your humor in times when we needed a laugh and your guidance, when we needed direction, has been critical to this administration, administration's ability to improve the city of Ventnor. Wish you all the best in retirement, and most certainly, you have earned it. So with that, I think we're going to go into our resolutions, and we're going to act on these in the workshop.
Right, that's correct.
All right, so the first one is, Resolution 2021-392. Resolution of the City of Ventnor, County of Atlantic State of New Jersey, accepting the retirement of Chief Douglas H. Biagi. Need a motion to? We're going to do it in the workshop.
Okay, oh, I see, okay. Yep, motion as described.
Okay, motion to approve by second, Resolution 392.
Republic on this is right?
Yep, Commissioner Kriebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Langrea?
Yes. Okay, the second one we're also going to act on is Resolutions 2021-393. Resolution of the City of Ventnor, County of Atlantic State of New Jersey, appointing the new chief of police. Get a motion, please?
Motion to appoint new chief of police, as described?
And that chief of police would be Joseph.
Joseph.
By second? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kriebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Langrea?
Yes. Okay, congratulations. We're going to come forward.
Back them up.
No, no, I mean, you back them up.
All right, but before we begin, I just want to thank you all for coming again. We don't get a chance to celebrate these kinds of things very often. And also, I want to thank the police department and the fire department for their work at the parade. It was a great success, and as we all know, we get a chance to, we would often get a chance to be together as a community. So I want to thank you all for that. Joe and I have been meeting over the last year at our, my regular Thursday meetings. And, and he also submitted a hundred day plan prior to this appointment. And he, he has a, a unique insight into what it's like to be a police officer in this day and age. And I look forward to working with you on that in the next, in your, in your tenure as chief. All right, why don't you come on the other side? Yeah. Hi.
Hi.
Say your name.
Joseph Foster.
You solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to saying.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And the governments established in the United States.
And the government established in the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Impartially and justly perform.
Impartially and justly perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Of the office of chief of police.
Of duties of the office of chief of police.
According to the best of my skills and ability, so help me God.
According to the best of my skills and abilities, so help me God. I'd just like to say a couple of things, first of all, of us. Being a coach and an educator, and my mom being an educator, you know, they taught me commitment. When getting involved in something, put your best effort forth, 100%. Take that, stay with me through my early career here in the police department. I just thank you and appreciate you being there and supporting me. Same to the girls in, in Cindy, there's been a lot of sacrifices. You know, a lot of holidays missed and stuff like that, being a police officer. You know, I thank them for that, for again, standing by me and being there for me and understanding what it really, you know, takes, you know, to be a police officer and do the job. Thank you guys, you know, men and women of the department. Come here and I look forward to working together and moving this place forward. Last but not least, I thank, thanks for giving me the opportunity to serve the city as the next police chief. If we can work together.
Appreciate, yeah, congratulations.
We'll take a picture with Jen.
Signing out of line, and it's all yours.
Oh, yes, yes.
Christmas Eve?
Yeah.
Twenty-third, all right. If you want to get a picture, everybody go ahead. Get a quick pic with everybody. Come on up, bring them on up.
All right, guys, come on up.
Come on up, get a picture.
Not my idea.
I thought, I thought I could see right over.
Where were you?
How's that? You're my wingman. You a ladder? Okay. I'm up close.
Right.
We called the meeting back to order real quick. If you're. If you're not familiar with how we operate our meetings, this is our workshop. We did a little extra there to get our new chief sworn in. Take care, Sandy, thanks for coming out tonight, thanks for everybody for coming out.
Yeah.
Merry Christmas.
Thanks, Sandy.
So we stepped out of that a little bit to get our new swearing in out of the way. I have one other thing, and this is, before we get into our workshop informal. The second person leaving us tonight is our solicitor, Mr. McGuire. He is on, after tonight, I should say, he is on Zoom. Tim McGuire will be leaving us to take the role as county municipal court judge in the new countywide municipal court system. We certainly congratulate him on his appointment and wish him the very best. Had we known we would lose our solicitor, maybe we would not have pushed so hard for this system to be put in place. Tim, you have guided this commission from early on in our tenure with your knowledge, professionalism, and focus. You've made sure we knew the options and consequences of each side of the decisions that we made over the last five years. Your knowledge of municipal government has been invaluable to Beth, Tim, and I. And in my opinion, the, the first advice you gave us was to use that phrase with everything, in my opinion. You have provided us with the best legal advice and guidance we could have asked for. Now I'm getting emotional. I believe I speak for all three of us, we wish you the best and believe you will do a great job in your new role. So thank you.
Thank, thank you very much, everyone, and I get emotional too. It's been a pleasure. I've told people, when you have clients and those clients morph into friends, it's a really special relationship. And I, I can't put into words how much I have appreciated working with you and being part of a team over these last many years. So thank you very much, even though I'll be moving on to the different position. I will miss you folks, and you can always rely upon me if you need any type of information or guidance. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Yep.
Okay, so we have no presentations other than the dribble you guys just heard me go through. But there are no department head reports and no capital discussion, discussion as of yet. Hopefully, in the new year, we'll have some of that, those discussions moving forward. We have no minutes, we have no ordinance introductions, and we have no hearing adoption, the public hearings and adoptions of ordinances. We do have, it looks like 20 plus resolutions that we will be adopting by consent. Resolution is 2021, 371 through 391, 394 and 395. These are items that are typical business of, of the commission, and we'll go through them now. We have questions on them, we'll try and answer them as we go. So the first one is Resolution 2021, 371, the refund to Robert Lukayowicz, Lukasiewicz, in the amount of $20 for surrendering his 2021 ice cream peddling badge per ordinance 2019-004. It's kind of self-explanatory. We have a Resolution 372, refunding to John Flood, $45 for overpayment of an Oprah request. Resolution 373 is enforcement for no parking within the city of Ventnor from January 1 to March 31st, 2022. 374, any details on that we need or?
No.
Yeah, we do that quarterly, just to keep things moving, okay. Resolution 374, authorizing disposal of surplus property. Is that the vehicles?
No, it's a, it looks like, oh, there's one F-450 Powerstroke, a rider mower.
Okay.
Fire machine, nothing.
I know, one, we are not disposing in this manner, it's an old Explorer that we're going to donate to the fire department for them to practice. Extrication vehicles, things like that, so. And actually, we have a new piece of equipment that I want to see him use, guys use, it's a jaws of lace, but it's battery powered.
Right.
And more gas or hydraulic.
Everything they do has a system and a science.
Yes, agreed, agreed. So we will dispose of those surplus properties by auction. Resolution 375 is supporting the Friends of the Ventnor Waterworks Foundation Fountain Restoration Project. We started this last month and or two weeks ago, and I think we're just going to amend that resolution, that is correct. There's some language in there we had to clarify.
Instruction of a new, not just restoration.
Right.
Yep.
It's pretty much, we found out at the site meeting that we're really not going to be able to save the existing fountain. It's going to have to be total reconstruction, so that's what we're going to end up doing. Thank again to Dawn, Dawn Burke and her.
Yeah.
Her team, Barbara Sullivan and those guys putting this thing together.
And you for Spirit.
Thank you, appreciate that, that's, it's been them, they just come to me, that's all. And going through it. Resolution 376, authorizing the city of Ventnor entered into a revocable license agreement concerning property located at 129 North Newport Avenue, Block 169, Lot 26 in the city of Ventnor. Our engineer has reviewed this, this is a set of stairs that project out into the right of way, but shy of the sidewalk.
Right.
That's always our concern if we're blocking sidewalk. So I think Ed has been okay with this. He did speak today to me a little bit about that ordinance, we might tweak that a little bit because there are certain things that he has to find.
Right.
That sometimes cause him a difficult time to recommend these things. Meaning it has to be a hardship of some sort where there, there might be some other parameters that we can set up in that ordinance to make it a little bit smoother process, so to speak. Resolution 377 is approving the promotion of Michael Konis to meter worker number one. This is another one in the, the process of moving our staff into the right titles to do the job that they've been doing and get compensated accordingly. So that, that's really what we're, we're looking at, we went through, and Cindy has helped us quite a bit with doing that, getting people in the right titles. So we're, again, doing the job that they're getting paid to do the job they're doing.
And under civil service.
Under civil service, these are the correct titles, right. Resolution 378, authorizing hires, hiring of Rosemary Falls Part-Time School Traffic Guards. Good with that. 379, authorize the execution of a tax abatement agreement for Block 27, Lot 1.04, also known as 115 South Newport Avenue. Tax abatement is part of the new construction ordinance that we have in place to encourage just that, new construction in our city. Resolution 380, also an execution of a tax abatement agreement for Block 45, Lot 4, also known as 23A South Vassar Square. Next one is also a tax abatement agreement for Block 50, Lot 12, known as 1A South Nashville Avenue. Resolution is 382, authorizing payout of funds to Douglas H. Biagi, and that's our retiring police chief, the funds that he had in six. If I'm, if I'm assuming right?
Yeah.
Not assuming, I, I know that because we discussed that. Resolution is 383, authorizing refund for tax homestead credit, this one I did not, I must have missed this on my agenda. Okay.
I guess it's just, it was something that was on the books, and they needed it from Ted, so it was repented me.
Okay, thank you, I missed that in my back, I'm sorry. Resolution 384, authorizing cancellation of tax.
And that's also a Margaret one, and the gentleman was a veteran.
Okay.
They're just, they're getting the.
They're getting caught up. Okay, all right, thank you. State of New Jersey authorizing refund of tax homestead credit, another similar as the other two. And 386, authorizing selling Chief Biagi and his issued laptop for a fair market value. That was a lot of negotiating.
He wanted the old laptop.
He wanted the old laptop, he wants the sticker on it is what he wants, he wants a Star Wars sticker.
We had it appraised.
Good, good. Resolution 387, authorizing mayor to execute a tariff agreement, CLE tariff, LED street lighting and replacement agreement. This is all part of our ESIP, I'm assuming.
Yeah.
Worked through that.
Yeah, recommended by DCO.
So over the next, actually, they've already started the work out at Titus Field, as of this week. They are moving into that site to replace all the lights on the fields over at Titus Field. In the next several months, they will be replacing all the streetlights in the city of Ventnor with LED lights. More efficient, brighter light, and as well as save us money. And that's all through this ESIP program that we, we joined up with. Resolution 388 is refund to Kevin Richmond in the amount of $20 for surrendering his 2021 ice cream peddling badge. You do that each year when they return those badges. Resolution is 389, word of a contract for boardwalk vehicle ramp replacement at Vassar Square. We have four boardwalk ramps that are vehicle accessible, and all of them need to be replaced, they're starting to show wear and tear, not necessarily on the surface, but the choices that are underneath. And this is the first one of, of those that we're going to do. We're hoping the one at, at New Haven will be done as part of some of the funds that the federal government is, is putting out with the Army Corps. They've already done the one at Suffolk, we want them to come back and do the same thing at, at New Haven, because they've used that quite a bit to access the beach. Resolution is 390, contract MJJ Construction, first floor door alterations at City Hall, not to exceed $120,000. Do you want to talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, briefly, it, I'm glad to see that we were, we were able to find a contract because it's one of these projects that requires some finesse. We're, we're, the goal is to make the first floor more secure and also user friendly for guests. So the, 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 and keep it within the historic character. So the, there's going to be a bit of wayfinding going on, there'll be more of an entry that's on the, on the north side of the building, I guess you could say. And, and that'll keep the building flow more secure, and there'll be a, an entrance there with a, a more, we've already got a makeshift desk there. So that's, that's part of that, and then the doors are already wired for a security system, but these will actually be, but they're, they're in some cases probably 100 years old.
Yes.
And these will be solid core doors and to match the second floor and give our employees a set of security that we all have to sort of deal with in this day and age.
And I was impressed with how they matched the ones they put on the second floor with, they're not the 100-year-old door.
No.
But they look close enough that, that it, but it gives us security that, that we need.
Yeah.
In all these rooms, so.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's a good, it's a good plan, we worked through with an architect, and I think it's going to flow well with the city. We're trying to keep the character of the first floor together.
Good, does this include the, like, the kind of entrance way we're going to do?
I think it's just the doors, one, one step at a time.
Got you.
Yep.
Process moves slowly through, but.
Yes, it is.
Resolution 391 is adopting a new employee handbook and personnel policies and procedures manual. And this brings us up to date with JIF, correct Maria?
Yes.
Resolution 394, word of non-fair open contract for professional services solicitor William B. Reynolds, Esquire and Mark Nemat Esquire, not to exceed $96,000. As I said originally, or earlier in, in the meeting, our solicitor is going to be leaving us. So we went out to, to bid, or for proposals, R.I.P. for proposals. We had two really good groups come in and talk to us, we each individually sat down with each of them and, and talked through a lot of what the services, and we're going to probably do a little hybrid, I think, is what we ended up discussing.
I think it's a good solution.
We will have Will Reynolds as our, as our named solicitor, he will be here, Mark will be his backup. And then the second one, the second resolution does exactly what I was talking about.
Right.
So we'll do 94 first, and then we'll, we'll do 95. So any questions with that one?
No, I mean, it's, I think they're kind of together in a way, in that we're get, we're, we have the strengths of the, of a full-time with Mark Reynolds and his backup, and then for some of the specific areas, the next resolution speaks to that.
Yeah.
I think it's a good.
Yeah.
I think it's a good, it's a good plan.
Okay, speaking of.
They're, they're all very good choices, very good choices.
Thank you, Tim, and we did rely on someone, your recommendations there, so appreciate that.
Yeah.
And, and on both of these, so the, the next resolution is 395, and it's word, the open contract for professional service alternate solicitor Parker McKay, Fred Cerny, not to exceed $25,000. That's going to also include more than his role in the past.
Yeah.
His past role was as our conflict solicitor, they didn't pop up.
Right.
What we talked about was their firm, Parker McKay has some really good experience in redevelopment world, some environmental concerns and things of that nature, as well as utility contract law, that we're going to rely heavily on that for, for those, those, those specific items.
So they want to, I don't, I don't know how you feel about that number, just kind of threw it in there.
Yeah, I, I think, I don't know.
On this year.
We might have to amend that as we get into it, and we can.
Yeah.
Because I, I think that's going to be, need a little bit more for the, for that end of things, but I think their expertise, I have some experience with, with both Fred and Linda Galella from that firm, and Jeff Winicki from that firm with regard to redevelopment cases. And that's, they're very good at that, and I think that's one of the reasons why we want to expand their role a little bit. So we're good there?
Yeah, that's great, I think we have a, really kept a really good decision on that that gives us the city the flexibility and the backup.
Agreed, agreed. We'll have bills and payroll. Oh, we have one more, I'm sorry, we have a couple more. So this is Resolution 396 of 2021. This one kind of came upon us rather quickly, this is, it's being added tonight on the bench. Resolution of the City of Ventnor, County of Atlantic State of New Jersey, opposing Atlantic County Board of Commissioners, Resolution is number 731, in support of the development of a rail transfer station in the city of Pleasantville. Why do you, why does Ventnor care about what's happening in the city of Pleasantville? Well, this transfer station takes construction and demolition debris out of the county's waste stream. Why does that affect us? It affects everybody in the county. The estimates that they plan on taking out, the fees that they plan on taking out of our stream is in the, the millions of dollars. That affects every one of us, every one of the taxpayers in the county, it affects our tipping rates. So by them taking that, those tipping fees out of our income stream.
Right.
It, it's a huge negative impact. I have to say, I was disappointed, their, their meeting was today at four o'clock. They moved their vote on this particular one to the beginning of the agenda, I was able to listen in on most of it before coming to this meeting tonight, and it seemed like the commissioners were in, in support of this resolution, understanding that this resolution is very early on in the process. understanding that this resolution is very early on in the process. I was disappointed that they, first of all, brought this about on Saturday and put it on their agenda for 4:00 PM today. We had a presentation from ACUA who handles our trash and recycling for, for the city at the end of, beginning of this month. As they do every year, they come in and tell us how they're doing, what they're doing. If our fees are going to go up, they're going to go down, they never really go down.
Gave us credit.
Gave us credit this year, they did, actually, yeah. Yep, so. This, this resolution, again, is, as I said, it's very early on, and you can tell I'm, I'm a little passionate about this because I think this will negatively affect us as a, as a county, as residents of the county. And all this does is, is support the city of Pleasantville in their futuring of, in their, in their study of the future transfer station. But I don't even want to see it go there at this point. There's, they have done none of the homework. The application in front of the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, that is a county-appointed board, is incomplete. The applicant that wants to develop this at the old Press for Atlantic City site has made application for it to the county. It's incomplete. Why would the commissioners then support an application for something like this? I reached out, first of all, we discussed as, as a committee, as a commission through Maria, that we all do not support this. So, I asked for a resolution to be prepared, and thank you for getting this done quickly. But I also sent an email to every one of our county commissioners, objecting to them putting this on the agenda tonight. So, we're trying to, I guess, hold off or, or at least wait till we get more information on this.
Right.
I think their, their application, and then I put, I don't know if it got read, but I put notes. Everybody's been on Zoom or some of these other, WebEx was the, was the program they were using, you can type in comments. And I did, and I said it was premature for the county commissioners to act on this this evening and ask them to table it. You had former county freeholder at the time, Alex Marino, object to it. You had the ward councilman in Pleasantville object to it. It's in his war. He stood up and objected to it. Why would they support something like this? I, I have, I have no explanation for it, so I'll get off my soapbox.
I can tell you're passionate about it.
It, it's frustrating, I've done this work.
But it's part of your, it's, yeah, it's something in your day-to-day, but to be concise for the city of Ventnor, because it affects our partner, it affects us.
Absolutely.
Because it's going to negatively affect the ACWA, which we have a contract with, it's going to negatively impact us financially.
Agreed, agreed.
And that's, and that for me, that's enough.
Okay, thank you. And thank you both, you and the mayor, for supporting my objection to this. So, that'll, that'll be on, that is Resolution 396. That. We have any discussion items?
I'm not aware of any.
I'll do my comments and the commissioner's comments, I guess, later on, right? Well, you've heard enough from me talking tonight. With that, we need a motion to open it to the public for any items on our agenda this evening?
Motion to open the public for any items that are on the agenda this evening.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, this time is for you to ask questions about the items that we've just spoken about. If there's something that was not discussed this evening, we'll have another public portion at the end of the meeting. Free to ask questions about anything that you feel like talking about. So, with that, anybody in the room needs to ask a question or make a comment, please step forward to our bent-over microphone. Seeing none, Jim, anybody in the waiting room?
Does anybody in Zoom wishes to speak or question any of the items that are being discussed or voted on tonight? Please make yourself known within Zoom by raising your hand or within the chat feature, and you'll be recognized. I don't see anyone.
Okay, motion to close public portion?
Motion to close.
Second, all in favor? Aye. Okay, we need a motion to close the workshop portion and move into our regular meeting?
Motion?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we have no minutes, we have no ordinance introduction, no hearings, public hearings, no adoption. So, I need a motion to adopt resolutions 2021-371 to 391, 394, 395, and 396, correct?
Motion to adopt resolutions as described by consent.
My second emotion, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kreebel?
Yeah.
Commissioner Langrea?
Yes. Wait a minute, we were supposed to let Al bug out of here.
So, I'll do the bill.
Okay.
Thanks.
Need a motion. But, or Al, could you please provide our bills and payroll for the, for this period?
Yes, the bill list for this period was $1 million, minor, $36,326. And the payroll for this period was $574,233.47.
Okay, you need a motion to approve bills and payroll, as stated by our CFO?
Motion to approve bills and payroll.
Second, roll call?
Commissioner Kreebel?
Yeah.
Commissioner Langrea?
Yes. Next item is our announcement, safety report, and that is laid out in our agenda, so we don't have to read that verbatim. Commissioner comments or report? Al, enjoy watching Merry Christmas to you as well, you as well. Eagles are on at 7:00, apparently, he's trying to get the game. Commissioner comments or report, do you have anything to?
No, it's been a busy week and holidays. I know that the, I do want to thank Shelley here in the audience for her orchestrating the parade. I haven't had the chance to say that in, in an email, but in, in person, I wanted to thank her for all the hard work that she puts in as a volunteer for that parade.
Absolutely, great job.
There's two things that stand out about the parade in my mind. One was that it felt like a, it felt like a large city parade. It felt like, like the city had, in a way, arrived and, and brought itself to, to a new level. And then, the other thing was that, and I said this before, but, you know, the, our police and fire only get to see our residents in, in difficult circumstances. And to have them out on every corner with the public, I think, is something that I'd, I'd like to see more of, and I was happy to see that. So, I just want to thank Shelley for all the hard work that you put in to make that.
You keep promising that, I've heard that a couple of times now.
And she always delivers.
She does, she does.
Yeah, thank you.
I echo Commissioner Kreebel's comments, Shelley and Pete, you're there helping her side by side. We, we always say Shelley, but it's all, Pete's always there, too. He's right beside.
That's his staff.
So, great job, and, and Dawn, I know, is not here anymore. I think she left, but, but the OEM group and help with, with Dougie Junior and Dana and all the gang that do all of our events so well.
Yeah, the cars, we, 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 yeah, the events in general are, are, have really kind of taken on a, a bit of a life of their own. But I think that's something that is really driving people to Ventnor, making, giving them reasons to come to Ventnor, giving them the businesses a lift.
Yeah.
That's it, it's, it's, and so we can continue to do it, I think, in a, in a smarter way every year. Year after year, we, we hone those, those events and make them, make them more efficient.
Agreed.
There you go, all right, we'll push it out there.
Okay, I had something on the tip of my tongue and I lost it. Oh, no, that's not it, but anyway, all right, so a couple of comments from me. As everyone has seen, the Ventnor City Lifeguard headquarters has been demolished. That process is a little bit behind. We got held up by the Army Corps replacing that ramp at Suffolk Cabinet. We couldn't cross that for a certain amount of time with the vehicles, we needed to demo the, the HQ. Try and make up that time, we'll see. We have kind of a tight deadline of May 30th, I think we have to be in it.
We already discussed the temporary.
Yeah, it's awesome, so, but I think you'll all be proud of the building that's going to be constructed there. It's, it's a state-of-the-art facility that will have, for the better part, men's and women's locker rooms for our lifeguards. We certainly have an integrated team that patrols our beach, and we need that for, for them, as well as providing a safe place for, for, if someone gets injured, that's the first place they could take it.
Yeah.
You know, they go there first, and for the most part, not right to the hospital. But the old building was, was not functional anymore. The joke is running that if the wind blows too hard, the phones don't work.
True.
And it was true. Yeah, you turned on the shower, the phones came on.
Yeah.
It was, it was a little bit of an older building, so.
It's a great design, we really work.
It is.
It's going to, it's going to make a bit of an icon on the boardwalk, but at the same time, it, it's going to, it's going to have the capacity for the beach patrol to, to train themselves, train each other.
Yep.
And with, and with the, the new sort of safety guidelines that, with the part that OEM and Chief Cahill is working with them, it's going to make it a much more efficient. And so, and let's face it, we're, we're a beach community, we need that.
Yes, you do, we do. All right, a couple of events, I guess, we're going to go back to our New Year's Day polar bear plunge. The Ventnor Business Association has really taken off and really done a good job getting their message out. I think they elected a board of, I don't know what they would call them.
Yeah, small board of directors and the, and the, and the, they have a, a great turnout and really got some momentum going. I think it's, it speaks to the, the growth of business in, in town. And I'm looking forward to, to the weather, because we both said we would do that plunge.
We're doing it.
So, we're doing it. So, I'm seeing 30s.
I'm, I'm forcing you guys to do it, I'm donating money to see you guys get wet. I know Beth may not be able to do it because she's got a little, she's with her foot, right?
Right.
But.
So do I. But.
I think the cool water will do your back well.
But, no, the, the business association, I'm, I'm with Mac Arts and, and Brenda is doing a great job at sort of gathering that, and, and Santucci's is kicking in, all sorts of. New, I think they're going to, I think this has a really good chance of benefiting the rest of the business.
And what, I like what they did, they picked someone from each of our business areas.
Right.
As one of the board of directors, so I think that's a really good start.
It's a great start, yeah.
And then you have someone representing each of those areas, and I think that's a really good, positive way to, to do it.
Yeah.
And again, the energy they had, I mean, the, the mixture they had was 40-plus people there.
Yeah.
Granted, it was at a restaurant.
Yeah, cocktails.
Yeah. It was still really well-attended, and that's good to see.
Right, even some of the new businesses that aren't even open yet, like the provisions, the vendor provisions.
Yes.
Going to be open was there, and.
And that's what was there, right.
And there, and, and it just has the sense that there's going to be a better pool of resources to move that business association forward so that they can help each other, really, so.
Agreed, agreed, great. Just closing comments, want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas. This is our last meeting of the year, so Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Everybody have a safe and, and spend well time, good time with your families. Be very wary of the new outbreaks we're, we're going through. I mean, that's something that has everybody concerned. Just be as careful as you can be, get vaccinated. That's all I have, so we'll, we'll need a motion to open it to the public for comments on anything.
Motion to open the pub, for public comment, for comments on anything.
My second, all in favor? Aye. Please come up to, again, our microphone if you want to speak in the, in the room. And pull it up if you could, if anybody wants to speak. No one? Hey, Jim, anybody in the Zoom meeting?
Oh, yes, Bill Sil would like to speak, Bill.
Bill, you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, Bill Sil from the Zoom meetings.
Yes, and I'm, I'm here on behalf of the St. Leonard's Association, and I wanted to take this opportunity to thank Chief Biagi for over three decades of public service and for his responsiveness to community concerns during that time. Doug's door was always truly open to us. And we've also worked with Joe Fusner, and, and we congratulate the city of Ventnor on his appointment as the new police chief. And we look forward to working with Joe going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill, appreciate that. We certainly echo those comments with Chief going out and the new chief coming in. We think, you know, our, our future looks bright here with, with new leadership. Take us to the next level.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
Andy, do you have anything? Andy, you'd like to add anything, you're the only one, other one in Zoom. Nope, I think we're good.
Thanks, Jim. Anybody, last call for anybody in, in the chambers? Nothing? All right, okay, no executive session necessary. I'll take a motion for adjournment.
Motion for adjournment.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Merry Christmas, everyone.
Happy New Year, coming out. Tim, good luck to you.
Thank you, you guys do a great job, keep along the path you're on. You really have done a tremendous job for this city. It was a pleasure working with each and every one of you.
Thanks, Tim, I'm going to miss you.
I'll miss all you, too, Merry Christmas.
Thank you.